So, we are actually reconvening the meeting of September 12th. We had a closed session before the open session and there was nothing to report out on that. It was regarding anticipated litigation. And so we will, and we already did our roll call, so we will start with the pledges flag. Stand. The pledge of allegiance.
Strip it live, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so we start with public communications. This is for items that are not on the posted agenda. And if anyone would like to speak to us on any matter, we'll just, let me introduce first it. It's any matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city but not on the posted agenda and we are not able to take action on any comments that come up because it has to be on the agenda for us to take action. So, you're welcome to come up and you have a three-minute limit. Please, if you could, state your name. That would be helpful for my records. Did you want to come up? And the microphone is available that helps with the TV coverage, but it doesn't amplify in the room. So, come on up and let me address this. Is anybody else ready to?
My name is John McKee. I did not look at the agenda and if there's anything on there about woodchips, I'll sit down.
I don't think there is.
Okay. When I drove through town last week, I saw the woodchips already up on the sidewalk and in the gutter. And then in the Sunday Ukiah Daily Journal, there was an article, "Woodchips: The Answer to Nothing." So, rather than read it, I ran off five copies for you folks. And maybe after you read this and think about it, you'll decide to just submit right over them and end the problem.
Okay.
Are you swiveling to the pale up here to take this?
Yes, I'm very good.
Thank you.
And that has already been discussed in the Caltrans meeting, so it's being looked at.
Thank you.
It's actually, yeah, it's not Caltrans, it's the city, so, yeah. Best he's done here. Okay, so, any other public comments? Anybody else want to address us on matters? If not, we go to our public matters. We don't have enough.
Okay, here, take mine.
Okay. All right. So, we are going to have a presentation by the Willets Chamber of Commerce. So, come on up. Allison.
Hi, thank you guys. I'm Allison Finley. And first, before we delve into a portion of our annual report, I'd like to introduce Marianne Petrillo of West Company. We were fortunate enough to receive some city funds this last year to bring Mark Wilson, a really wonderful man, to assist some of our businesses in town. And so, Marianne with West Company was able to bring him here. So, I'd like to turn it over to her for just a couple of minutes.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for having me today. It's a pleasure to be here. We were very fortunate back in May, on May 3rd, we had the opportunity to work with Allison, the Chamber, Stephanie, others on the City Council, to bring Mark Wilson, respected speaker, national speaker on retail marketing, to the whole 101 corridor. So, hey, Mark spoke in, oop, let me try to do this. Mark spoke to Willets on May 3rd. Before I tell you a little bit about his findings, I want to also make sure that everybody knows what West Company is. For those of you who don't know, West Company has been in the community for over 30 years. We are a business development center. We are also an SBDC and a women's business center, which means that we're federally funded and able to provide one-on-one, no-cost counseling to all businesses in Mendocino County. And that is indeed our mission. Our mission is really to provide adequate, relevant, and timely business resources to all over the community. And the no-cost counseling consists of feasibility studies, it consists of marketing plans, business plans, licenses and permits, so anything that a business owner needs. But one of the things, one of the things that we realized that was being severely impacted because of the economy and the changes in the economy is in retail. And so, that was our impetus really to get Mark to come out and talk specifically about some of the trends that are happening today for retail. Because there is a lot of fear, not only about construction and disruption that happens within the small-town community, but also, you know, box stores and other things that impact the economy and has an effect to the retail markets. So, as you can see, our goal was really to help to educate and inspire the Willets retail community. And by that, we had Mark Wilson come over. And not only did Mark come and do a seminar here, it was a two-hour seminar, and we had about 25 different businesses from the Willets area come and speak, come and listen to him speak. But then what he did is afterwards, he took five of those businesses and he went into their shops and did a one-on-one session with them to kind of look at their store and give them advice. I provided materials to all of you about some of the things that, the trends that Mark talked to us about and some of the advice that he gave to a lot of the retail owners. A couple of things that I've highlighted here were things that he kind of talked about in general, which is, it's so important for our retail markets today to be open and be found. And that means to be found online, because really the trend is to make sure that all of our retail is seen in a very lively, interactive, and, you know, tech-savvy and mobile-savvy way. So, he really emphasized ways that retail clients, retail shops, could do this at no cost or a low cost. And a lot of this was talked about, getting on TripAdvisor and things that, you know, everyone could really do and get involved in. He also talked about how, you know, you as the shop owner really need to be your brand. And so, you know, for many of them who are there, they realize that and they are out in the community and they are very active. But really, he tries to emphasize too, the importance, especially in a small-town community, for retail markets, retail shop owners to work together. The more that they work together, whether it's to plan events, or plan sales, or plan activities, that really fosters a lot of goodwill. And people who are outside, and you promote this online, really do see that and feel that when they come into a community. So, I think the advice that he dispensed during the seminar portion was really very well-received. The second part of his visit was what we called a windshield assessment, where he actually went out and we drove around Willets to kind of look at the town through the lens of what could we do to help our retail stores and foster more engagement. You know, his whole approach, and remember, one of the things that Mark has done is done this in small towns all over America, so it's not just here in California, he's actually on the East Coast, but he travels everywhere. And he talks about the importance of creating a destination, you know, what brings people to your town. So, it's not just the local, what is going to bring to the town. He loved our sign, the Willets sign, he was very excited about that and thought that that was a real driver. And of course, he loved the redwoods and the things that we had to offer. But he did make some recommendations that, you know, it really was important for people to, you know, have a destination restaurant, something that people can latch on to. It's not to say that you're just highlighting one specific business, but that brings in a lot of other people, especially when they're Googling, especially when they're looking online and looking for a place to go. You really want to, you know, provide the community outside of Willets to know what you're known for. And so, he really, as, you know, and I think several of you who were on that drive about, you know, he pointed out the signage, definitely, you know, way signs to where certain activities are, lots of signs around events are really important. And then also just ways in which you can spruce up the kind of walking areas for your businesses, having color and having flowers and having, you know, decorative garbage cans, things like that, so that when people come into the town, they really have a sense of place. That's what he was looking for. And that also is part of your packet, was his windshield's assessment, and you can read, you know, more of the details on it. And that's, you know, that's the essence of the presentation. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I am happy to answer any questions, if there's anything specific that any of you might have about the time that was spent. And he was here for the full day on May 3rd.
So, the drive-through that included from the north to the south end of town, because I know that we have this identity thing, sometimes we have the downtown and then the south end of town.
Yeah. And we drove pretty much the whole area. And that was one of the things that he said, is because you don't have a continuous, like just walking area, so try to center, you know, where the walking area is going to be and then make sure that you have signs that are driving people to that, directing people to that area. That that's very important, because when people come in, and that's what he thinks he talked about, there isn't a sense of where they should go to find the center of the town. So, that was one thing that was highlighted.
Any other questions from the council members? He did, he did go past the sort of town limits, both north and south, he also went up to Brook Trails, came in that way, out to the edge of Highway 20, came in that way. So, he saw all the kind of entrances and outlying areas around town.
And you'll see on that report, you know, he did check off the things that he did see, and you'll see whether there was many of them or too few, and then some of his recommendations. But all in all, he was very happy to meet everybody in Willets. And I think that the shop owners who participated, especially in the one-on-one, got to learn a lot about just how to orientate their store to attract more visitors.
And I do want to just also say that Marianne and the West Company is really a wonderful resource that I think we could make more use of for merchants and business people, anybody who wants to start or expand a business. They are really wonderful and it's free to get a consultation, and so, we need to start using that wonderful resource.
We have offices in Fort Reg and Ukiah, and we're actually going to be, we're working with thousands of workshops here in Willets, workshops in the Willets, but we're more than happy to work with any business in town, any aspect of your businesses.
Thank you, Marianne. And we love working with West Company. They provide so many resources, not only to us as the Chamber, but to our businesses. And we often refer people over to them with more specific questions. So, you know, it was great to be able to convene that meeting between Mark, West Company, Willets businesses, and ourselves. So, let me just pull up our next portion. What you're going to see behind you guys now is pretty much what you have right in front of you for our report. I just added two fun slides with pictures, but that's about it. So, what I've done is put together an annual report, so you can see what we have been focusing on the last year. Start out with just our mission, which is to make Willets a better place to live, work, and play. The purpose, the reason why we are there is to promote Willets, its economic well-being and quality of life, and the values that we try and portray every single day in our community, with our businesses. Everything that we're doing is the spirit of collaboration, excellence, selfless service, integrity, commitment, and loyalty. And I think those aren't only values that we try to portray as the Chamber, but it reflects who our community is in Willets. We have such a great community that often reflects many of those values, and it is an honor to be able to try and serve our community in that way through these as well. So, our overarching goals as a Chamber are to be a catalyst for business growth in and around Willets. We just heard from Marianne, that was one of the great opportunities. We had to work with somebody else and bring that about. So, we do this by creating connections to business prospects, networking opportunities, and relationships in a friendly referral-based environment. The Chamber receives copious amounts of calls every month where we are constantly referring our members, not only to people who are local here, but from all over the country and sometimes internationally. So, we want to create access to business resources, information, and classes to support the growth of business in Willets. Earlier this year, excuse me, right into late 2017, we were able to bring the EDD, the Economic Development Department, to Willets to give a talk. Businesses came and learned what changes were going to be happening in their tax structure. And that was a great opportunity for us to show our businesses, you know, give them that hands-on access to the EDD. And so, then we also are a catalyst through networking and advertising opportunities to connect businesses to new opportunities and potential employees. All of that is through our website. We also focus on being a convener, to be a convener with leaders, influencers, and community stakeholders. And we do this in order to collaborate with our businesses and community leaders to identify and solve challenges. And we were definitely able to do that with West Company when they brought Mark Wilson, and he was able to identify some issues that we are facing and suggest some possible solutions to us in the future. We also want to influence issues that directly impact local businesses and make sure that they thrive as much as possible. Advocate with our local representation, elected officials, policymakers, and business leaders on local, regional, and state platforms on issues that affect our businesses as well. So, and we also want to be a champion for a stronger local community. This is one of the things that we focus very specifically on, by inspiring smart decisions for long-term community sustainability, identifying strategic partnerships for the benefit of business retention and growth, workforce development, charitable giving, we have a lot of wonderful nonprofits in the area, and leadership development. Also, representing a vibrant community by aggressively marketing all that Willets has to offer. Here in Willets, we know how amazing Willets is, but getting that message out can be difficult at times, especially with the challenges we're facing. So, we have a few strategies we use to tackle that. And also responding to visitors' needs by providing assistance through the Willets Visitor Center. We have a visitor's center open right down the street, Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And that is where we send out packets to people who call and ask about Willets, they're looking to relocate. Like I said earlier, people call and ask all sorts of questions, we refer them to the people that can help them, and really are that catalyst and convener to champion the businesses that we have. So, next, we have a letter from our president, Barb Ivy. And in front of our council members here, they have the full letter, but it is a lot to put in a PowerPoint slide, and I didn't want to do that to you guys. So, just some brief bullets. You know, the Willets Chamber and City Council have a longstanding agreement and relationship that keep us both thriving. So, in the late 1980s, there were discussions between local lodging owners and the Willets Chamber of Commerce about ways to fund ongoing and sustainable promotional programs, which is kind of our niche. So, and in 1990, at a meeting of representatives, the Willets Chamber of Commerce, the Willets lodging owners, and the City of Willets agreed to increase the TOT, which is the transient occupancy tax paid by the hotels and gas stations, I believe, for the purpose of funding the Chamber to help with the promotion of Willets. And we receive a portion of that funding still today. At a special City Council meeting on October 5th, 1990, the City Council voted unanimously approving the increase in the terms of agreement. And since that time, subsequent councils have continued to honor that agreement and have allocated that money to the Chamber for us to accomplish our mission and purpose in Willets. So, here are a few Chamber statistics that I threw together for you guys. So, you all know that I am new in the office. So, that has been a really fun and exciting challenge. And one of the ways, or one of the things that we wanted to focus on when I first came in was our social media presence, because so much of the world is now on social media. They're looking at Facebook, TripAdvisor, all these things to find where they want to go. They're asking people, you know, have you been there? Do you like this? What do you like to do? So, we focused on growing our social media, and we have seen last fiscal year, a 20% increase in our social media followers who also actively share the things that we are sharing, you know, as much as they do. And since that time, since our last fiscal year, I just rechecked the numbers earlier this week, and we are up to 29% growth. But this 20% reflects the last fiscal year. So, we're really proud of that. You can see on the right-hand side that it goes up by quarter, it gave you the specific percentage it's increased. And in order to increase awareness of Willets, the Chamber, and various events that happen around town, we have really made a concentrated effort through social media, and we've had some really great success that we're proud of. And then another thing we're really proud of that was very recently launched in the last couple of years and has been getting more and more use is our website and a new software we use called Chamber Master. And this not only helps us track and advertise our specific members, but advertise the town as well. So, you will see these statistics that again represent the 2017, 18 fiscal year, but 134,504 total views to our individual members. These aren't just website views, people view the website broadly, but when you Google a business in Willets, particularly if they don't have a website, which is something that Mark Wilson brought up when he was here, you need a website to be found. For those businesses who do not have a website, we have one for them. So, if you Google a business without a website, it's very likely we're going to pop up as the very top option. It's going to open up that member profile page for that business, and it's going to give them everything they need, from their hours of operation, their contact information, and anything else the businesses would like to add in that area. Some people load pictures, lots of fun stuff. And it also has a map point that will specifically direct them to that business. So, that's a great feature.
Is that if they're a Chamber member or if they're a business?
That is if they're a Chamber member, but we also have general listings for our businesses in Willets as well.
Do you track the searches, or does the system track the searches? Like, I give you a lot of searches from Kentucky versus searches from Southern Kentucky.
I'll have to look into the specifics of that. I know that our website tracks where things come from. Chamber Master tracks more of how many hits are being gone through, but I could dig in and find out for you.
Well, because I noticed when you see advertising on television for Visit Missouri or something, obviously they have some sort of demographic that they're going for, but you figure they...
Yeah. You see where all those people are visiting from. Yeah, I'll have, I'll look into that.
So, just in case anyone missed the point that you just made before, that is, if a business isn't computer-savvy as far as setting up their own website, as long as they have a page, a business page with Chamber, that will show up on the search.
Yes, it will. And like Brickhouse and a lot of other of our phenomenal businesses in town are very social media savvy these days, but don't necessarily have websites that reflect what they're doing, their business hours and operations. And so, we want to be there to add just one more thing to let people know, hey, this business is here, this is when they're open, this is their email address, this is their phone number, and if you want to just leave your house right now, this is how you get to them. So, yeah. And each Chamber member business profile is viewed on average 747 times a year. That goes for all of our nonprofits, all of our retailers, anybody. And we, with our statistics that we had the last fiscal year, those are only going up. So, our projections into this fiscal year are higher than this, so that's exciting to see.
A question about that.
Yeah.
So, I'm a business owner, so statistically, you're telling me that 747 times, somebody's going to my website?
No, they're going to our website with your information. So, whether, and a lot of our Chamber profiles for our businesses directly connect people to your website. Imagination Station has a phenomenal new website. Am I right?
We do.
Yeah, so, we would connect people who are looking, if they find the Chamber instead, if they're kind of looking around for, you know, different services in the area, and they type in, you know, hair salons, or, you know, certain retail, they're going to be able to see that and connect directly to you in whatever form of media that is, whether it's your website, your Facebook, Instagram. A lot of people are on Instagram these days, so.
And are those, because 747, that's the average.
It's the average.
Are there certain, are there certain types of business that are taking the majority of those, of those hits?
Um, our hospital sees higher. I actually do have a couple of printouts with me for every single Chamber member that we have and all of the hits that they have had in the last year. So, I'd be happy to show you those, and you can look at the breakdown of who gets those. But on average, we see 747 hits per year to our business.
I'm just curious where the draw is for people.
You said the hospital is a big draw.
Yeah, the hospital, I mean, they're up into the thousands. I just congratulated La Siciliana and Celtic Heritage Destinations this last month, because they both went over 1,000 views for the year. So, that was really exciting. And this is a new software that we have, and the software we purchased has been purchased again by another company who is constantly making improvements to that and giving us access to these numbers, so that we can look and specifically tell you everything that we're doing and where our dollars are actually going into these, so we can pull these stats for you to look at. And there's a couple pictures behind you that you don't have in your, have in your packet there. But the North County Women in Business is a committee of the Chambers. We have a wonderful chair, Jenny Center, and they had 11 meetings last year in one event, the Discover Willets event. And these are just some fun pictures from that group of people. And on the left, excuse me, bottom picture, you'll see Heather Guritz with EDFC and Jason Corte of Tri-County's Bank. They both came and talked about financing options for businesses, whether that's through regular banking means or through EDFC. So, we're able to connect our businesses with local people who can really provide access to help them with, when they're looking for loans and so forth. And we do a lot of different things there, but this was one of our really exciting ones in the last year. And then Chamber events, these are just a few, I couldn't fit them all on there. We had a member appreciation breakfast last year, a Shop Small Saturday event, North County Friends of Mendocino College Mixer. We have a lot of mixers, but we were so excited and proud to work with North County Friends of Mendocino College, because they started a lending library. And at the mixer that we had with them on January 12th, they were able to raise all the funds that they needed to fully stock their Willets lending library. So, we're really proud that we could partner with them and make that happen for our local college students. We had our 37th Annual Car Show, a top 10 employers' meeting where we brought together the top 10 largest employers and asked them very specifically and point-blank, what problems do you see? What are you facing every day? What issues do you have with employment? And that way, we can come behind and say, how can we connect you to solving those problems? I already talked about the tax seminar by the EDD. We had a sip and shop with our Holiday Lights Party, that was the tree lighting that happened in December, the mixer afterwards, and then our local shops downtown were open for a sip and shop. We had a downtown construction meeting. A lot of our downtown merchants were really concerned about the construction happening. We connected them with the City of Willets, Caltrans, and Granite Construction, where they were able to say, hey, going into the fourth quarter really doesn't work for me. And you'll notice they are wrapped up, and that is not just because of effort on our part, but I think all of our parts for saying we would like to see this wrapped up as soon as possible. But it was really great to provide a space for our businesses to come and specifically address those issues. We had our Retail Revolution with West Company that we loved, participated in the Women's Empowerment Summit, which was a great local event, and we have multiple mixers, which provide networking opportunities for our businesses. So, here we have some more statistics. Our Visitor Center, that is right down the street, visitors frequent the Visitor Center, both local and travelers alike. We provide them with a variety of local and county traveling information, referrals, tourist information, and much more. We saw 3,402 visitors last fiscal year, which is just counted by chicken scratching pieces of paper, uploading that to an Excel spreadsheet, and making sure we keep count, because so many people come through those doors, it amazes me. Some days I'll have two, some days I'll have 30. It's a lot, but I'm glad they're coming. So, we put together 270 packets last year. Information and relocation packets are put together by request. The Chamber prints visitors' guides, maps, and various other travel material and marketing material. A combination of these and other local information is used to send out and distribute to all of our visitors. And any organization or group in Willets may request a packet. The City requested... The city requested some from us. The hospital will request them for new employees. But if you ever need anything for a new employee who's not from the area, we're happy to put together a packet welcoming them to Willet's, showing them everything that is here. And then we also frequently send them out to people from out of the area. My slide's being, okay. We had, you'll see this in your packet. The slide is, got the wrong picture up there and apologize about that. But we have 130 average monthly phone calls. The Chamber is your information center. We receive calls from all over the United States requesting traveling information. We always help locals and travelers alike find what they're looking for to the best of our ability. They ask all manner of questions, and we direct them where possible to exactly what they need. We have one employee and three volunteers. So, there's one paid staffer, which is myself there in the office, to run the Visitor Center. It is always open and always staffed by either the Chamber's single employee or a small group of dedicated and helpful volunteers that will help you find what you need. And then the last few slides are just a representation of the TOT funding that we receive. You'll see that's 44% of our income, and our program income is 39%. Fundraising, 16, and others, 1%. And we use that to accomplish the things I talked about in the previous slides. Here's a quick condensed version of our balance sheet and our profit and loss. So, are there any questions that I can answer for you?
The Chamber used to act as a clearinghouse for local events so that if I were going to host whatever, I would check with the Chambers so that I didn't conflict with something else happening. Are you doing that still?
Absolutely. On that website that I talked about where we get all those hits, we have a calendar. And that calendar is open to anybody in the community. You do not have to be a Chamber member to upload what you would like on there. So, that is really the clearinghouse for people to come in, log in what they'd like. We in the office try and put as many calendar items there as possible so that if somebody does call, which they do frequently, and say, hey.
So, that way, like when we do a picnic in the park, it's not the same day that somebody else or one of the churches decides to do something.
Yeah, absolutely. And that way, it's listed and even another location for when you Google something because we have some great SEO, search engine optimization, that is going to pop up. So, people will be able to find it quickly and easily.
Any other questions for this?
Yeah, so, I'm looking at your profit and loss, and you're showing better than $20,000 loss. Is that sustainable?
The $20,000 loss?
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah. So, you all know that we were very unfortunate to lose Lynn in 2016. And following that was about six months where the office was mostly empty, but we were able to come in and keep it staffed. So, you will see here, our payroll expenses are actually inflated because we had myself as well as two other part-timers when I came on, really trying the best they could to keep the Chamber open, the Visitor Center available, answering calls, sending packets out, updating the website, things like that. So, we had to pull from our reserves this last year for several reasons. And the board has talked, and we have a strategic plan moving forward to make sure that next year, our profit and loss doesn't look like this. But it's not sustainable for the future.
Yeah, okay, but that's just the one-year.
Yeah. And that's because of the several setbacks that we had in the office with Lynn and then Lisa Epstein left as well, which was difficult for us.
So, looking into the income, what is program income?
Program income is going to be our dues mainly. That's, that's what you see, so.
Okay, and then the contracts?
The contracts is our TOT.
Okay. Gotcha.
Any other questions or comments?
I wanted to throw in just that, you know, the Chamber acts as our economic development partner because the city does not have an economic development department, actually. And so, that's what the Chamber has been acting as that for us. And I really appreciate the work that Ally has done. It's been very pleasurable working with her, bringing programs to us and bouncing economic development ideas with her. The Car Show was wonderful, and I just wanted to thank you for your work.
Thank you, Jerry.
I found that you've always been very accessible. I stopped by, I found you uptown and picked your brain, and so, I appreciate that aspect of it. And we've had a long relationship with the Chamber, and so, I look forward to working with you guys.
Well, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I would like to announce one. Is that okay?
Yes. Questions or...
Not a question, but I'd like to add a couple of things, if I could.
Yeah. If that's okay with the...
Why don't we have Ally finish her, what she was going to say?
I'll just make mine quick and ask them.
Ask for comments, yeah.
So, the Chamber is very excited to announce that we have been able to work with the city and are bringing the Great Race in 2019 to Willet's as a lunch stop. So, the Great Race is this huge national event. They bring hundreds and hundreds of people with them to the towns that they visit. They are starting down in Riverside and going all the way up to Washington. And so, they contacted us, and we were able to work with them and land Willet's as a lunch spot. So, on July 25th of 2019, the Great Race will be here with over 120 classic vehicles. They are going to set up this huge announcer, announcer stand, and people follow them from all over. They will be here for a period of three hours of time, and we cannot be more excited that we were able to bring them into our small, wonderful community.
They're not going to be here at 4:00 on a weekday, are they?
They're going to be here in, at a lunchtime. And I think the 25th is a Tuesday, but they start an 11-day race, and they go up. So, we'll have a good chunk of time to go visit them, but it's not going to, unfortunately, it's not going to be at the very end of the day when everybody can make their way over.
And why don't you also announce your next hometown celebration?
Oh, yes, we, I just had that meeting this week. So, we've been working with the downtown merchants, and we are going to have our Harvest Festival, which is our fall version of our Hometown Festival, happening October 19th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. We're really excited. And then the very next day, we have the wonderful Visit Willet's event that's happening, the Wild Willet's Festival. And so, we wanted to make a very special space in town for people who are coming through to visit that event. So, you're going to have a packed weekend of exciting stuff, starting out with the Harvest Festival, moving into the Wild Willet's Festival. And I believe our poster is going to say Harvest Festival's Gone Wild this year, so keep an eye on it.
Okay, so, any comments from other people in the audience? Did you want to, did you want to ask either a comment or a question?
I just wanted to add a couple of things on what she was saying.
Good.
So, for those, okay, who don't know me, my name is Rashawn. I run the Old Westing down the road here. I'm a director in Chamber of Commerce and a part of Marketing Committee. To manage the district of Dallas, but have demographic analytics works. We installed a plugin recently, a couple of months ago, which tracks down where somebody is clicking the website from. So, it's, it's not completely detailed just yet, but it will take a little bit of time. But once we have the information, it will be very, very easy for her to know where somebody actually clicked from.
Do you get a lot of online bookings?
Yeah, yeah. I, I like to have a very good online presence for the hotel. I learned quite a lot into it. And then I joined the Chamber of Commerce, which I spread my knowledge, you know, adversely on there. And the second thing I wanted to also mention was if, how every business was getting all those views, it's a part of a program called Chamber Master. It comes in completely free as a part of the package of you become a member as a Chamber. So, I do encourage pretty much every business who's not a member to become one. You get a login for the Chamber Master. You can pretty much update your information, but not just that. You can even put in links. Let's say if you're hosting a program, there's something going on with your business. You put it up there. It spreads it out to the Chamber Master, which then puts it to all the social media via Chamber, which gives you a lot more hits than you would personally tend to. So, there's a couple of things I just wanted to add on there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good, thank you very much. Anybody else? Great, well, thank you very much, the Chamber and also West Company, for what you do to help promote our businesses here in Willet's. And it's working, it's great. So, we're going to move on to, I don't have any ordinances to add. So, we go to the consent calendar, which includes a set, two sets of minutes, dispersed journals, a resolution regarding parking, restricting parking in the city-owned lot over there. And purchasing a police dog. So, yeah, any items that...
I'd like to pull C for just a quick discussion.
C that regarding restricted parking? Okay. And I just want to mention item D, which I don't think we need to pull, but I'm really pleased that we are going to be getting a police dog. It's very helpful to our police department to have available. And I think it's also wonderful to go out to the schools. So, we're going to do consent calendar, A, B, and D. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. I think we can take, no, we have to have a roll call, but so, Dolores, would you give us a roll call on that?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, item C. Jerry, you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm, I'm for it, but I guess the concern I have is that we posted it. People are parking there. There may be some history there, and I'm, I was, I would hope that we would do a, before we actually start issuing citations, that we, we get it in the paper. We issue warning signs or put flyers up so that when people get their ticket three months from now, they say, we didn't know about this, they would have known about it, even though the signs are posted because there's a history parking there.
Can I comment?
Yes, please, Steph report.
She should ask you.
Steph, please.
So, the city manager and I discussed this, and this is part of the plan is to advertise the fact that, that we're going to start doing enforcement. I recommended a two-week grace period where we put, the police department puts warnings on the vehicles. The city manager recommended a month, and we, we decided on, unless you want to change it, we decided on three weeks. So, what we would do is I would print up warnings explaining the ordinance and the parking and if, and, and mark down the particular vehicle. They get a warning, and three days from there, they park again. I think we should be able to cite them because we've given them fair warning about parking there. Other than that, it would be a three-week thing for any new.
Okay, Larry?
Is this for both parking lots that the city owns?
This is, the only place there is restricted parking for signs that we intend to do that are already there are on the west side of the city hall. That's the only place. Yeah, no restricted parking out there.
Well, no, we have restricted parking here, no overnight parking.
Well, right, I'm talking about for employees.
Yeah.
Yeah, all, all the city lots have overnight parking restrictions. And that's, that's the particular section, same particular municipal ordinance that this would follow.
So, the problem was that even though it was posted that it was employee parking only, we did not have an ordinance in place that allowed you to actually enforce that. So, that's what we're doing, and we're making it formal. Is that right?
Yes.
Making it so that we can actually enforce it.
Exactly. And Larry, did you have something for us?
I, I just, I just think that's going to be really hard to enforce. That's just me.
Each, each employee will have a placard, and the, so, any police officer will be able to know what says, what is a city employee vehicle and what is not. And if a city employee doesn't put their placard up, they're going to have to pay 45 bucks if this passes.
So, so, how exactly will the enforcement work? I mean, you're not going to have officers assigned to patrolling that parking lot.
Just like any other parking area. If, usually, it's generated by notification to the police department. And I have a feeling that city employees will report that to the police department if somebody has taken up one of those spaces.
Okay, and this, this restriction will not apply if they're business hours, I assume, right?
That is correct.
So, people going to the theater will park there like they always have?
Yes. You know, there's a couple of reasons that the city employee parking is a good idea. One is for, it's, it's an extra perk, which is the least amount. It's an extra perk for the city employees who don't get paid a lot. The other is a lot of the employees...
You're realizing it.
You don't want me to, I won't. A lot, a lot of the employees work after hours. Now, even though it's only till 6:00, their cars are already parked there, and the light from the city hall plus the, the close proximity, it allows them to be a little more safer than walking out into this parking lot. Also, there's been a history of vehicles that park in those spaces back into the city hall, damage their car and damage the city hall. So, this, this helps to reduce that somewhat, too.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea because it makes sense. It's, it's a small, hard to get into and out of, and having the employees taking up the spaces in the big lot is, is not user-friendly, I guess. So, that's a good idea.
I just wanted to add one thing. We also have, although it's posted, and it's actually posted, we have signs, it is posted, we do have a couple of folks who continue to park there. And when they've been asked to park elsewhere, they have told us, well, you don't have the right ordinance, so I can park here if I want to. So, that triggered this. Well, I guess we should get the right resolution in place.
So, the citation can read, "Now we do."
So, basically, that's why we have a warning system so that they won't be caught off guard that...
Yeah, good idea. So, is there a motion?
Move.
I'll second.
Was that a motion or a second?
Yeah, move, that was move.
Okay, and we can do this on voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Can't we do that, or does an ordinance have to have a...
It's, it's a resolution.
You didn't say any nays.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to ask, there were no nays?
Aye. Aye, nay? Nay.
The aye was a nay.
Shall I do that again, or are we okay? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Yes.
You are...
Opposed.
You're opposed. Okay, so, we have a four-to-one vote on that. Thank you. I'm sorry, it wasn't clear. Okay, moving on. Information reports are in our packet. Building inspection has license activity. The building inspection activity report is very nice, lots of activity. That's very good. Commissions, right to appeal. If anyone is aggrieved by decisions we make, you generally have 90 days to appeal them in the court. We do not have a separate commissions meeting tonight. We are going to go to the city manager report.
Okay, I just have a few things. One, California Coastal Cleanup Day is on Saturday, and I'm just holding up this poster. This is fabulous. Willet's was the first inland chapter of coastal cleanups. We're very proud of that. It will be centered in city, in the city hall parking lots at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday. And we've got some wonderful sponsors, the Mendocino, Mendo Mill, and Willet's Power donated bags and gloves and some tools, picker-uppers to pick nasty things out of creeks. And so, and we also had a, so, solid waste of Willet's is putting a container out there so, to put all of our creek junk in there, and they're waiving fees to, to take all that to the dump. And so, we really look forward to people showing up and cleaning our creeks so that all that stuff doesn't get into the Eel River and eventually to the ocean. And it's really important that we keep our water shit clean. Music in the park, are very excited this is happening, and it is starting next Thursday. And it is 5:00 to 7:00 in Rat Grove. We have a Country and Americana lineup, and we want to thank our, our very generous donors. And I'm going to call one out right, right now, is Michelle McCoy was our, our first donor. She owns Lula Ray, and she sparked the donations, and I want to thank her for starting that out. This is a, we have some wonderful sponsors, and you'll see the news about it around town. Measure B, I know people have asked whether or not we're going to have a report out on the Measure B Committee. We are not. Jed Diamond, I spoke to him. He's going to come next council meeting, which is September 22nd, to report on both the last council meeting, the last Measure B Committee meeting and also the Measure B Committee meeting, which will have been held on that day of September 22nd. And he'll talk about that.
The, the meeting is September 26th?
26th, I'm sorry.
Yes, just wanted to make sure.
I'm sorry. And so, if, that is why Jed is not here today, he will be here in two weeks. And so, if that is why Jed is not here today, he will be here in two weeks. That's all I have for today.
Department reports, administration, anything? We're happy to have Dolores here sitting in for City Clerk Kathy Morehead, and she is at a training.
Kathy Morehead, our city clerk, is at a training. So, we have Dolores Patterson right here, and she's taking a great... Doing a great job being interim city clerk here or acting city clerk. And but Kathy will be back.
Do you have anything to report?
Nope.
And we don't have our H R person today, so I guess there's nothing to do there.
And finance, our finance director is busy working on the budget.
Yes.
Which will be... We'll have a special meeting on the twentieth, the twentieth first.
Yeah, that's important.
Twentieth, the twentieth. I'm sorry, the twentieth at...
Nine a.m.
Twentieth at what time?
Nine a.m.
Nine a.m. So, twentieth, if you're interested in city budget, which is where the rubber meets the road here at nine a.m.
Do you know how long we're expecting that to be?
I don't think it's going to be very long.
An hour, a couple hours, a full day?
Oh, well, we've already had our workshop. We made the suggested changes that came out of the workshop, so I expect this to be a very quick meeting.
And Jim, do you have anything for legal?
No, I just was curious, though, whether or not the city has received anything from the county regarding our request for records.
Not a single thing. Yes, that's a good thing to mention, actually.
Okay, okay. All right, and public safety. Chief Wannett, do you have anything to...
Nothing to report over getting... Well, K-9 has been approved.
Yes.
That's the only thing I have.
That's it? Okay, good.
I never want to have.
Community development. Dusty.
Thank you, Mayor Strong. Dusty Dooley, city planner. Just wanted to mention, a follow-up. We had a couple of members of the public that were interested in living in a travel trailer while they constructed a new home in Willets. It's something that's prohibited under our current city code, but there was some interest in the council to explore some potential revisions to our code that would allow for that type of living situation to be accommodated under certain circumstances. I think overall staff is interested in presenting something to you guys for consideration. There are a number of standards, I suppose, that we would probably look to recommend as part of allowing someone to essentially camp on their property. We're looking to allow that in a sensitive... To a sensitive level, but understanding that such a situation could create some nuisances and mess with the integrity of a residential neighborhood. So, for instance, you know, you might have a situation where it's a vacant lot that has no water, has no power, has no sewer, and we're allowing somebody to camp on that property. So, you know, some other concerns, you know, might be privacy, you know, if they don't have a power source and they're looking to install a generator, that could have a noise issue on the neighbors and everything like that. So, without going into too much detail, it's on our list of something to do. It's looking like it's maybe a forty to fifty-hour task for staff to put together a full report and ordinance and meet with colleagues and other stakeholders before coming up with something. For staff, we've got our next five to six weeks pretty well planned out with a number of matters that have come to our attention going back a number of months. And so, we'll be looking to complete those before taking on this task unless the city manager directed me to make this a priority. But I did want to follow up with you because, one, because staff said that we would. So, we are looking at other ordinances, and I'll be speaking with a number of my colleagues to sort of talk about fire safety, you know, water, sewer services, power, et cetera. But that's where we are with that topic at the moment.
So, it'll be a few months before we get to see any proposal?
Based on the current workload and where we have our priorities set, just sort of the order of how things came across the desk, that would be correct.
And I did speak to the folks who came at the last council meeting and sort of told them where we were, and they understood that it was going to be a matter of months and that it may not benefit them, but maybe somebody after them. But they did want to follow up, and it was nice for them.
Question?
Yes.
For building inspections, one, we have the new person on the...
We actually have a interim building inspector on now. He works Tuesdays and Thursdays from nine to one. His name is Dean Fuller, and so he gets a list of building inspections. So, we're... We are not missing a beat with the building inspections. Our permanent... Our new code enforcement officer, not course... I'm sorry, our chief building official will be starting work at the end of September.
September twenty-fourth.
September twenty-fourth. And about that time, John Sherman will be back from vacation, and is going to onboard him for a while before his retirement.
So, just... I didn't hear the whole thing.
I'm sorry.
So, we have a new code enforcement officer?
So, no, we have a interim, part-time building official who is doing building inspections.
Okay.
And so, he works Tuesdays and Thursdays from nine to one, and so we stack up his inspections during that time period. On September twenty-fourth, the new building official is actually going to show up for work.
And the building official is the inspector or the code enforcement?
Well, he's going to be doing both right now.
Okay.
And so, he's going to be starting... John Sherman is going to be coming back from vacation approximately that time, at the end of September, and they would... Those two will be working together for a while so that there's going to be some overlap to make sure that he's onboarded correctly.
Okay, and we still have an assistant planner?
We do.
And the grant guy. So, we're getting up to force there.
Yes.
Yeah.
And they're all wildly busy. It's wonderful.
Yes, Jerry?
Thank you.
Will we maintain a relationship with Mr. Fuller afterwards so that if our new building official wants to take some time off, we'll have somebody? Or is this just kind of a quick fix?
I think it's wonderful that we actually know somebody who could step in, and John Sherman was very confident of him. We also hope that John Sherman, he's not... We hope that he's not moving, and so that he'll be a resource as well.
Okay.
Which would be great.
Sounds good to have some backup.
Yeah, it's good. But we have a... Christopher is just... He's rare to go. We're very excited for him to come onboard.
Anything else, Dusty?
No, that was it for me. Thank you.
That's it? Okay. All right. Public Works in Engineering, anything at all for that? Public Works in Engineering, nothing? Okay, let's move on. City council and committee reports. And by the way, for those of you who are devout followers of city agendas, we are going to be simplifying the listings in our agendas in the future. This is the old style where we list all of these different agencies and committees that some of us are on. And in the future, we're just going to have council and committee reports generically, and then we're going to make sure that anything that happened in the last few weeks gets reported that's significant. Anything that's significant that affects Willets instead of going down this long list. So, it'll be a simplified form on the agenda, but we'll still get the relevant information. So, League of City, I'm just going to basically, you know, quickly...
Since I've asked for it.
Okay, and MCOG?
MCOG did not meet.
Okay. EDFC, I think they're meeting tomorrow. EMS, yeah, EMS was meeting in a couple more weeks. Haven't met. MTA?
MTA concern was brought forward. Our city planners are aware of it and working on it, but a bus stop has been removed at Brown's Corner, which is a concern to MTA and some community members, but it sounds like the city's connected with MTA and trying to find a resolution. So, we'll see where that goes.
Okay, Lafco?
Lafco met this past Monday, but there wasn't a lot to discuss. There were just some updates, other than we did have during citizen comment, which I think is of interest. We've asked staff to look into it. Apparently, when the tax, I guess, hospital tax passed recently around the coast, there's some properties on Orsprint Road that apparently are closer to Yucaya than they are the coast and probably will never, according to the folks that spoke, that will probably never use the Coast Hospital. And they approached Lafco about wanting to do a detachment, and so we directed staff to get some more information, so.
All right. Finance committee, we have not met as a finance committee. We are meeting as the whole city council on that special meeting, September twentieth. Water, wastewater, not met. Re-Bye Ed is not meeting for another couple of months, I think. Caltrans meet, they... We did meet about a week ago. Do you have any... You worked there?
I wasn't there. I've heard quite a bit about that meeting, though. Perhaps you'd like to start, and I can tell you how that's been going.
Yeah, it was a pretty interesting meeting, but I'm not sure I can remember all the detailed details. Do you want to, Dusty, you want to?
How'd that be?
Yeah, I remember a lot of it, but I don't know.
Let's team up. I'll go first and maybe if I miss something.
Okay.
So, another positive meeting, this was our monthly scheduled meeting with Caltrans staff to talk all things relinquishment. We went over a list of items. City staff did a walk with Caltrans staff of the existing work that was done for the sidewalks, identified a handful of modifications that the city felt needed to be completed. Some of those items have already been upgraded to the city's satisfaction, and otherwise, we talked about a number of solutions to the other items on the list, and we anticipate those items getting completed. So, positive conversation. We identified what we thought were some issues. Caltrans agreed, and we're coming to agreements on what those fixes should be. So, then, we also talked about the Sherwood project, and they're moving along with that project, and it's slated for completion in possibly as early as June 2019, but it's, I think we'll call it, summer of 2019 for completion of the Sherwood project. And then, another matter was because they're so far ahead with the sidewalk work, there may be an opportunity to actually get into the road pavement work as well. Caltrans provided staff with a paving materials recommendation. I'll say that it was better than what we had been told we might get in the past, but maybe not the ideal paving recommendation that the city would hope to see. Staff is crafting a response to their recommendation, and we'll keep working with Caltrans to figure out the best solution to move forward with that part of the relinquishment project. Let's see. Again, you know, what the relinquishment agreement says is that Caltrans is going to leave the roadway sidewalks in a state of good repair, which is loosely defined as about a ten-year lifespan, so.
I wanted to add for the benefit, especially for the benefit of people on Main Street, the business owners and so forth, they... At a number of the intersections where they obviously needed to put in the ADA ramps so that all the sidewalks are ADA compliant, there are places where there are utility boxes or flood drainage channels or other... Or the, you know, other obstructions where they cannot necessarily get the sides of the ADA ramps to go like that, and then the ADA ramp, and then like that. So, on some of them, they had curbs, and people started immediately tripping on the curbs. So, on some of the intersections, they were, you know, they were really a hazard. People didn't see that there was a curb cut there, and they turned their ankle and stuff. It was... And in fact, I was talking to one business owner over here who said that they saw people actually trip and fall into the roadway because of these things. So, anyway, that's why there's a lot of little cones set at the various places where these hidden hazardous curves are. I don't know if that makes sense, but you can see the difference between the ones that have the little edge like that. And so, they're going back, and they're either retrofitting them to have a slope or they're going to put planters on either side because when there's a planter there, you know that there's a curb. If there's no planter, you don't expect to have a curb in the middle of the sidewalk. So, that's why there's all these cones all over the place at these little hazard places and why you're going back and taking out some of the concrete to put in planters. It's sort of too bad they didn't do it right the first time, but...
Right, if they're willing to go and fix it and get it to where we want it, then that's fine, too.
Yeah.
I had someone make a comment that the crosswalks weren't aligned, but I just assumed we weren't doing... They were going to come in and do striping later after the pavement, so I... But was that part of that same issue with the ADA?
There are, yeah, there are places where the ADA ramps, instead of going parallel in both directions, they go in the middle. Like, for example, right at the corner here in front of Brick House, the ADA ramp goes... Splits the difference. So, you aren't going this way to cross or that way to cross. You go down the ramp and then go across. And that's because there are the poles on either side. You can't put the ADA ramp and you have to... Anyway, so they had to work with a lot of constraints on the drainage and the poles and the utilities and all that stuff, and some of the ramps ended up being a little bit hazardous. But I think some of them do go at an angle. Anyway, that... So, when they did the sidewalk, they did a punch list. Here are all the things that aren't quite up to snuff, and Caltrans is dealing with them. And then, we'll deal with all the rest after Caltrans is done, which includes the wood chips.
Yes.
Yeah. It was brought up earlier. Okay, that was Caltrans. Measure B, you already announced, so we will have that. That's the mental health possible facility being located here in Willets, which is going to be at the next meeting, so two weeks from now. Little Lake Fire, JPA.
Larry and I did go to the Measure B meeting, and they basically discussed the Kemper report. And I understand that he'll be back to explain that, so I don't think we can need to delve any deeper than that. And apparently, there was a report, Larry, that you got... The sheriff spoke at the board supervisors updating that on that side.
Yes. I do think we get a little bit of mixed messaging. We aren't being included on some of these things that aren't... And we do have representation at the Measure B committee, but some of the informal stuff is not getting to us in an overt, you know, kind of transparent way. Okay. Little Lake Fire, JPA, I don't think...
No.
And Visit Willets, you...
Yes, Visit Willets Tourism Board has been very active. Next week on the nineteenth, we meet at four o'clock here in the council chambers. And on the agenda, we'll be having the Mendocino Tourism Board will be there. It's my understanding they're there to present us with a check, so we're very excited about that. As well as on the agenda, we'll be discussing vacancies, and we've put it out there that if you're interested in serving on the board, that you can pick up an application from the Chamber of Commerce, or you can go on the Visit Willets website and print out one, and you can drop it off at the chamber, or you can drop it off here at the city, and they'll put it in my inbox. And then, we'll be selecting to replace some new members. It's a requirement determined on the board that you can't miss more than two meetings, and we're a hands-on board, so anybody who hasn't been active, we've asked for them to consider supplying us with their resignation, and we're anticipating just a small handful of them. And we have quite a few people that are interested in filling those positions that want to pull up their sleeves and get to work to make Willets a better community. So, we're excited about that. And as I mentioned before, we've got Willets Fest coming up on October twentieth. And if you'd like to be a vendor for that event, it's only twenty-five dollars. Everybody's welcome to come and vend in the park. It's going to be a day of all kinds of... The best of Willets. That'll be the taste of harvest. If you just want to come down and enjoy some local food and... Or if you want to come and check out the health benefits, whether it's running or what natural things we have in the community from... There'll be people in the park doing Zumba yoga. There'll be hoedown for kids. We have a pavilion tent that'll be set up where you can taste food that was grown by local farmers with a secret ingredient. So, there's lots of good things happening.
Mayor, may I just mention that regarding the JPA feasibility study for wastewater treatment, I neglected to say that I have a point... treatment, I neglected to say that, uh, I have an appointment with Chris Neary to meet with, uh, County Attorney in Santa Rosa, a week from today, the nineteenth, to talk about engaging an auditor.
Okay, and I don't know actually, uh, I think I am assigned to that committee, but I don't know, I'll have to look that again, see who, who our JPA members are from the city.
Actually, we don't have, we don't have a formal committee on that.
Yeah.
Kind of a placeholder to, uh, to move in that direction.
Okay. Okay, good. Um, so, I, I think if we could combine, um, council member reports, recommendations and good and welfare, so we'll just go down and see if anyone has any, any of those things to add to what we, we talked about.
Well, I guess you, you might speak to it, but you read a proclamation at the nine-eleven thing at the high school, but you and me and Suprema were there and, um, and then also, Stephanie, I, I guess Brook Trail's announced last night who their new director is, do you, did you know who that is?
I do not.
Okay, I didn't make their meeting.
Denise resigned? Denise resigned? No, she resigned.
Well, she's retiring.
She's retiring.
John, do you have something to add?
Her name's Damar and I'm not sure of the last name.
Oh, okay. How soon does that happen?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I just met her after.
Denise, Denise has been letting people know for some time that she'd intended to retire.
Okay.
So, it's not a surprise.
Not a surprise, okay. Uh, yeah, so thanks for reminding me, I'll, I'll just add that there were a couple hundred high school students, uh, because it was held right there in front of the high school, all of the students came out to, um, to observe the nine-eleven, um, commemoration. And it was a, you know, short ceremony, but it was, it was very heartfelt and it was really nice to have a bunch of young kids, many of whom were too young to remember the nine-eleven, to the actual day, but I think, uh, it's important not to forget.
I think they announced a significant thing with some of the kids that were there were born after, man.
Oh, my goodness.
And if they weren't born after, they were like, you know, tiny toddlers. So, yeah, so we're passing along the history. Um, anyone else have, uh, anything to add?
Just, I just, I was going to echo what, uh, both you and Jerry said, that it was an honor to be there at the nine-eleven, um, celebration and to hear from the, particularly when Chris Wilks was talking about, you know, the first responders who were doing their duty, how brave they were to go into the buildings and how many of them lost their lives, uh, doing just that and, uh, it just, it was, uh, it was a moving moment and I'm appreciative that our community takes the time to, to honor that, um, as we do on a national level. And then, one last thing I just wanted to, in comments, uh, that I noticed and, uh, this stood out, Larry, as a business owner, was that, uh, one of the things that, uh, the, the report that, uh, Mary Ann Petrelli gave out from West Company, one of the remarks in here that maybe we haven't talked about in different forums is that we don't have our URL posted on our business windows and that might be something to put out there in the community, that putting our website on our window, you know, often we put our phone number, we put our address, but times are changing and maybe that's something to consider. I know you might not have a website, but, but we certainly can encourage those who do have a website to, to put their website out there.
You know, and it might be helpful on that line that when we do our business license, that we have a spot for their website information.
Yeah, we, we really need to start promoting that a bit more. There are some wonderful websites here in Willets, if you, if you have to go on online and check some of them out.
So, I have a couple of announcements to add to, uh, all of the volunteer opportunities that are coming up in the next five days, four days. Um, we already mentioned the, the coastal and creek cleanup day on Saturday. Tomorrow, starting at ten AM, volunteers are welcome to go over and help prepare the concrete bunkers that are there at the corner lot of, uh, Main and Commercial, West Commercial. Uh, we are going to be prepping them, uh, the fire department is going to help wash them and we're going to be putting base coat and then we're going to be painting something along these lines. These are illustrative, they aren't necessarily what it'll end up quite looking like, but we're going to be painting kind of a mural of, on each of these bunkers over there of scenes of our beautiful valley and the hills and the creeks and the, the rivers and the last one has some salmon in the creek. So, um, there will be a whole series of, of these murals down at these low bunkers. So, it's really, uh, another part of the, um, Willets Economic Localization, um, effort to beautify and add color and enthusiasm to our community. That's tomorrow and also on Sunday, um, so tomorrow at ten in the morning and Sunday at, right after church lets out, eleven to twelve o'clock and then however long it takes, we're going to be progressing. And then Friday, uh, the Well Paint the Town group is also putting up the first photographs that are going to be, um, displayed in some of the empty storefront windows. So, instead of going downtown and saying, "Oh, there's all these empty storefronts", you're going to go, "Wow, there's a photo display going on. This is like, uh, an outdoor gallery." You can walk down and see all these pretty, uh, professional photographers that we have many of. So, the first two that are going up are from Ree Slocum and they're in the building right next door to Buster's. Used to be Tiger Lilies, nice clean windows and so, uh, it'll, it'll change the look of some of these empty storefronts and I think it'll attract, uh, new businesses to want to move there because it'll look attractive.
Are they inside or outside?
They will be inside, just as close to the window as we can get them so that you don't have too much glare.
Good job.
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of...
That's a neat thing.
Yeah, and it's very much, uh, you know, it's really interesting how we have the Visit Willets Board and we have the, uh, Chamber of Commerce and we have Well, basically all working, uh, at the same time and the, and the, uh, concerts in the park. I just feel there's this, you know, that's the word, there's, there's a surge of, of citizen involvement and energy and hopefulness, uh, that is really palpable and I think it's going to really, uh, show up in how Willets moves forward. It's just, it's really exciting time to be here and to, to participate. So, volunteers, plenty of things to do the next five days. And, uh, with that, we do have a closed session, so I'm going to open, I'm going to close the, um, the public part of this meeting and we have a, a public session regarding, um, negotiations with employees.
Jerry, how about a write?